Morning.
I apologize for my issues that I had trying to get on. I was putting in the wrong password. Um, is everybody here this morning?
Looks like it.
Okay. Great. Wonderful. All right, um, well, I'd like to call the meeting to order at nine oh four A M. Good morning, everybody. And, uh, Ms. Jones, would you do a roll call to, um, to so that we can document everybody present this morning?
Yes, I will do that. The weather's speed there. My, uh, my tech room is in the next room. Okay, well, at any rate, uh, member Bitzer, are you present?
I am indeed.
Member Ely. Um, and I know she's not here. Member. Member Garcia.
Yes.
Member Honker.
I'm present.
Wonderful. Chair Sweeney.
I am. I'm present.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Trujillo.
Present.
All present and accounted for. Member Ely is, uh, absent.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, members of the board, um, this morning and um, just want to welcome everybody. So now, uh, based upon our agenda, uh, we're on item number two, which is the approval of June six twenty twenty five agenda. May I have a motion by one of the members, please?
Um, approval of the agenda. I'm sorry, the minute.
It's the agenda.
Well, I move approval of the agenda.
Uh, okay, member Bitzer, are you, are you moving to approve the agenda?
Yes, sorry, I'm not good with the buttons.
Um, excuse me, Chair Sweeney, um, I'm getting some, some messages from, uh, the
All right, I think, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Something happened to my sound. Give me one.
I hate to, I hate to break in, but there were some of the attendees cannot hear the meeting, so I wanted to just, um, have everything sort of stop until we make sure everyone can hear. Uh, Ms. Sona, can, can the group in your, in your room hear us?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. I think it's just the, um, I think the attendees. So stand by while we make sure that they can, they can hear the meeting, okay? I apologize.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes, okay, I'm
You can hear me, I can't hear you. Uh, let me see. Let me try to log, log out, log back in. Give me one second. I don't know what happened to my sound.
Okay, and it looks like participants are able to, I mean, the attendees are able to hear us, so. Prices averted.
Can you hear me now?
We can, and yes, I think we're, I think we're good to go all across all boards. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Apologize for that. All right, so we have a motion on the floor from member Bitzer for approval of our June sixth agenda, and I think I heard a second from member Honker, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I second the motion.
All right, is there any changes or discussion? If not, Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on the approval of, uh, of, um, June six twenty twenty five agenda as motion by member Bitzer?
Yeah, member Bitzer, your vote?
I vote yes.
And member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Uh, Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Trujillo? Vice Chair, how do you vote on the approval of the agenda? How, how do you vote, Vice Chair Trujillo, on the approval of the agenda?
Vice Chair, can you hear us?
Member Bitzer, are you indicating that you can't hear us either?
I can hear you, Pam.
Member Garcia?
Yes, I hear you.
Member Honker?
Yes, I, I'm hearing everything.
I was just doing sign language for the vice chair in case she can't hear us. It's like
I could not hear you guys. I'm sorry. I was trying to fix my sound too, while that
Okay.
short time, I couldn't hear anything.
You're the last remaining vote we need to approve the agenda.
I, I approve.
Very good. Okay, thank you. The motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Um, I know we're having some, some, uh, audio and technical challenges this morning, but with that, we go to our next agenda item, which is the approval of minutes of April twenty fifth twenty twenty five meeting. Um, and this is on the latest revision. May I have a motion?
Yes.
I move.
Oh.
I move we approve the, uh, minutes of April twenty fifth twenty twenty five as amended.
I'll say you're done.
Okay, uh, we have a motion by member Garcia, and I think member Bitzer just beat you out, member. So we have a second by member Bitzer. With that, if there's no other discussion or revisions, seeing none, uh, Ms. Jones, please do a roll call vote on member Garcia's motion to approve the minutes.
To approve the amended minutes of April twenty fifth, member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
All right, member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
But Chair, Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, members of the board. With that, we get to number four, which is public comment. And Ms. Jones, do we have anybody on the platform that wishes to make public comment today that you know of?
No, no one.
All right, looking to see if anybody's raising their hands. I don't see anyone. All right. With that, just waiting a second more. All right, with that, we will go on to agenda item number five, E I B twenty five dash twenty three R in the matter of petition for regulatory change to adopt twenty dot two dot ninety two N M A Clean Transportation Fuel Program. And, uh, today we have the attorneys for, uh, for the department and counsel for N M E D. You have the floor.
Good morning. Hi. Since we've had some sound issues, I just want to double check. Everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, good morning, Chair Sweeney and members of the board. My name is Kelsey Sona. I'm with the law firm Robles, Ray Allen and Naya. And I'm pleased to represent the New Mexico Environment Department Climate Change Bureau in this matter. Uh, with me today in the room is Jessica Nixon, um, also contract counsel for, uh, N M E D. We have Kelly Villanueva and Dylan Vieskis, also counsel for N M E D. And the Climate Change Bureau Chief, Aliya Borchardt. Thank you for setting this special meeting and for your time this morning. We're here to fulfill a mandate from the legislature to present the department's petition to adopt a clean fuel transportation program regulation at Title twenty, Chapter two, Part ninety two, New Mexico Administrative Code. In March twenty twenty four, the New Mexico Legislature passed House Bill forty one, which was signed by Governor Michelle Wuhan Grisham and codified into the new section seventy four dash one dash eighteen of the Environmental Improvement Act. This action aligns with the governor's executive order twenty nineteen dash zero zero three outlining New Mexico's proactive approach to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, particularly in the transportation sector, which is the second largest greenhouse gas source, greenhouse gas emission source in New Mexico. With this new law, the legislature mandated the establishment of a market-based Clean Transportation Fuel Program for New Mexico to decrease the carbon intensity of transportation fuels over time. Shortly after the law was enacted, the department secretary convened the statutorily required advisory committee composed of approximately thirty stakeholders to provide input on regulations regarding carbon intensity of transportation fuel prior to the department filing this petition. This new law makes New Mexico the fourth state to enact laws for clean transportation fuel following California, Oregon, and Washington. Notably, as directed by the legislature, the rule allows for coordination with these other programs, which the department has done, continues to do, and plans to continue to do. As you know, but some of the public here today might not know, the department's not asking the board to decide on the substantive parts of the rule today. We're just asking for the board to schedule a hearing. Even so, I'd like to give you a breakdown of this proposed rule, given its length and complexity, to provide some context as you make the procedural decision of whether or not to authorize a hearing to learn more. This rule, a new Part ninety two, establishes mechanisms calculating transportation fuel lifecycle emissions. It awards credits and assesses deficits in a market-based program. It provides robust protections for verification and compliance. It requires investment of certain revenues to benefit New Mexicans. Collectively together, this is considered the Clean Transportation Fuel Program. The activities that the rule regulates are transportation fuel produced, imported, or dispensed for use in New Mexico. The persons regulated are those who produce fuel in, import fuel into, and dispense fuel in New Mexico. The rule does not impose regulatory change on the typical New Mexicans' day-to-day driving and fueling activities. This rule works by assigning a carbon intensity of a transportation fuel based on the fuel's greenhouse gas lifecycle analysis. And I want to pause for a minute and explain a couple of the important terms that I've been using since they are defined terms of art. Uh, transportation fuel was defined by the legislature, and it means, quote, electricity or a liquid gaseous or blended fuel, including gasoline or diesel, liquefied petroleum gas, natural gas, and hydrogen, sold, supplied, used, or offered for sale to power vehicles or equipment for the purposes of transportation, end quote. In the rule, certain transportation fuels are explicitly regulated, while others can opt in to generate credits. Lifecycle was also defined by the legislature and means, in simple terms, all major stages of a fuel supply life chain from the well until the wheel turns on the vehicle. Lastly, carbon intensity means the quantity of transportation fuel lifecycle greenhouse gas emissions per unit of fuel energy expressed in grams of carbon dioxide equivalent per megajoule. The rule provides a science-based, technology-neutral methodology for assessing the carbon intensity of a transportation. These are called fuel pathways. Common fuel pathways and their associated carbon intensities are set by the rule. Where a fuel pathway is not already established by the rule, the department certifies the fuel pathway, which are then called alternative fuel pathways. The rule also sets the Clean Transportation Fuel Standard, which is to reduce the carbon intensity of transportation fuel in New Mexico by a minimum of twenty percent below the twenty eighteen year carbon intensity levels by the year twenty thirty, and then by a minimum of thirty percent below the twenty eighteen year carbon intensity levels by the year twenty forty. This standard decreases annually on a schedule in the rule to achieve the statutorily mandated reduction. The rule establishes how producers, importers, and distributors will incur deficits or credits based on a transportation fuel's carbon intensity compared against each year's standard and the quantity of transportation fuel supplied during the applicable year. The rule allows transportation fuel with a carbon intensity below the standard to earn credits. Transportation fuels with a carbon intensity above the standard will generate deficits. The rule establishes technology-neutral mechanisms for credits to offset any deficits a regulated party confers during that applicable year. In simple terms, the way it works is credits are sold to a regulated party to satisfy deficits, which must be set, um, which must be offset on a one-to-one basis. The revenue from credit sales is regulated for utilities and automakers to support transportation decarbonization and electrification projects in New Mexico, including projects specifically in low-income and underserved communities. Regulated parties will use a system and system modules called the Clean Transportation Fuel Program Data Management System, or D M S, to register, report, and trade, meaning to satisfy deficits, and manage alternative fuel pathways. To maintain the credit market and ensure annual compliance, the rule establishes documentation creation, record-keeping and reporting requirements. It has procedures for monitoring and verifying transportation fuel transactions, equipment maintenance and calibration requirements, carbon intensities, credits and deficits, and more. Like the three other state programs, the department will use third-party verifiers to certify regulatory activities and compliance. Timelines and parameters for buying, selling, and retiring credits and satisfying deficits are also set forth in the rule. The rule establishes a fee scheduled in a manner to cover the costs of the department's administration and enforcement of the program, and has several other, uh, administrative provisions, including emergency authorities for the department to defer compliance when the rule, with the rule, when there's emergency or forecasted conditions. Requires periodic review to evaluate program performance and the rule. Contains enforcement authorities and processes, and has an appeal process, um, to contest certain decisions by the department. In sum, this robust rule complies with the content requirements directed by the legislature and the statutory rulemaking requirements for the board. Um, should the board have any minor substantive questions today about the rule, uh, Ms. Borchardt is here and able to answer those for you all. Uh, turning briefly to the timeline that I'm sure you saw in our statement of reasons, N M E D's carefully consider the statutory and regulatory requirements in putting together a proposal for the board's consideration. Section seventy four dash one dash eighteen subsection A of the Environmental Improvement Act mandates that the board, quote, "shall promulgate rules to implement a Clean Transportation Fuel Standard Program no later than July first, twenty twenty six," end quote. This is a non-discretionary requirement from the legislature to adopt a Clean Transportation Fuel Program. The department's estimating that we'll need fourteen business days to conduct a hearing for this rule. This somewhat unusually long hearing request will make sure that we have sufficient time for the board to hear from the many interested parties about this rule. For the dates, the department is requesting that the board schedule the hearing to begin on September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, and continue through October seventeenth, twenty twenty five. And during this timeframe falls Indigenous Peoples' Day, and so we're also requesting that in recognition of this state holiday, the department not schedule hearing proceedings to take place on October thirteenth, twenty twenty five. These hearing dates will ensure that there is sufficient time for the pre-hearing process. Additionally, these hearing dates will also ensure that following the hearing will be sufficient time for the board to close its record, issue its final orders, and allow for time for the submittal, the transmittal to the New Mexico Register and the register staff to finalize that submittal and publish the rule. This will ensure we achieve the effective date for the rule of February first, twenty twenty six. Also, the benefit of an earlier adoption of the rule is that the easier compliance will be for regulated parties to achieve the stringent legislatively mandated emission reduction in the year twenty thirty. Additionally, by June tenth, although hopefully earlier, we're requesting that the board issue the appropriate orders granting a hearing to meet the June twelfth publishing deadline for the board's public notice on the New Mexico Register. Successfully meeting this deadline for June twelfth will result in publication of the notice on June twenty fourth and keep us on track for a hearing to start September twenty ninth. Lastly, the department recommends the board appoint a hearing officer for this rulemaking and specifically recommends Felicia Orth. Ms. Orth has extensive experience as a hearing officer, including having presided over several complex transportation-related rule makings with this board. Ms. Orth is available and interested in serving as the hearing officer. And to conclude, briefly wrapping up and summarizing, the department is asking the board to make a procedural decision to authorize a hearing on the Clean Fuels Rule. This is a decision that does no more than initiate the hearing process, which will allow the board and public to explore more of the complexities of this rule. The petition complies with the board's statutory and regulatory rulemaking requirements. The department requests that the board schedule a hearing beginning September twenty ninth, twenty twenty five, with no proceedings to take place on Indigenous Peoples' Day, and continue through October seventeenth, twenty twenty five, or as long as necessary to hear all testimony, evidence, and public comment. The department also asks the board appoint Ms. Orth as the hearing officer. And lastly, the department requests that the board timely issue its appropriate orders to meet the June twelfth New Mexico Register deadline to ensure publication of the public notice of the hearing. Thank you very much for your consideration and time this morning for the department's request for a hearing on petition twenty five dash twenty three to adopt the Clean Fuel Transportation Program Rule as a new Part ninety two. I'm happy to answer any questions should the board have any. Thank you.
Thank you all. Um, members of the board, do you have any questions of, um, our guests this morning? Yes, member Honker.
Yes, uh, thanks for the, uh, presentation and, uh, I, I certainly am amenable to, uh, accepting the petition and, and scheduling a hearing, but you lost me on the timing. Um, it, you were talking about getting all of this done with an effective date of February first uh, of twenty twenty six. The legislative deadline is, is July first. Seems like there's an extra five months in there. I mean, why, why are we in such a hurry? Uh, when we seem to have much more time, uh, than your proposed schedule would indicate.
Uh, thank you, Chair Sweeney and member Honker for that question. There's, there's a lot of benefits to getting this rule adopted earlier than the legislatively mandated deadline. Having the rule in effect by February one, twenty twenty six will allow those extra months for the parties to, or the regulated parties to generate credits, to, um, begin working under the rule, and it will help us achieve compliance with the twenty thirty statutorily mandated reduction targets.
Uh, thanks. I'll, I'll let other board members, uh, ask questions.
Thank you. Um, thank you, member Honker, for the question, and I see member Garcia, uh, the far shares.
Thank you, Chair Sweeney, and, uh, thank you for your presentation. Um, I see that you're asking for uh, about three weeks for the hearing, so it appears you anticipate not only a lot of information presented, but also controversy around this rule. Um, is that correct? And also, uh, what kind of outreach have you done, uh, to prepare the regulated community? And what kind of, uh, opposition are you anticipating?
Thank you, Chair Sweeney and member Garcia. Um, since the legislature adopted House Bill forty one, the New Mexico Environment Department convened the advisory committee, which contains a very robust, well-rounded, uh, group of stakeholders. They met a number of times over the summer of twenty twenty four and convened, um, to specifically discuss the ins and outs of this rule and the pros and cons for New Mexico. Uh, the public was invited to those meetings and able to, to participate. Uh, the, the advisory committee submitted a report to the department for the department's benefit in considering how to develop these rules. In addition, the, uh, department conducted robust stakeholder, uh, engagement. There were public meetings about this rule. A draft of the rule was presented to the public, and they were able to comment. Uh, the department took individual meetings with numerous stakeholders, uh, including the regulated parties and just interested members of the public to discuss the ins and outs and complexities and technical components of this rule, and has included those considerations in its final draft of the petition, uh, for this rule. And so there has been very robust consideration of what the concerns may be leading up to preparing for this hearing. Given the, the amount of participation that there was and the number of stakeholders that the department met with, we believe that there will be interest, uh, in engaging with the board during the hearing. We do have two interested parties already, uh, entered as parties in this rulemaking, and we want to ensure that there's sufficient time for the board to consider the information presented. This is one of the longer rules, uh, that's been presented to the board, and we think that that there'll be many different topics that we'd like to cover and make sure are, uh, well-rounded in the record. Thank you.
Thank you for that response. Member Garcia, do you have any other questions? All right, uh, member Bitzer?
Yeah, real quick, uh, what year was House Bill forty one passed in?
Uh, thank you, Chair Sweeney and member Bitzer. It was passed in March twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four regular session. All right, I was just to see, uh, sort of to, um, remember Garcia's question, uh, about I was just to see, sort of to, Member Garcia's question about level of controversy. Twenty-six fifteen in the Senate. So yeah, you're gonna have a, yeah, not, not going to be a thirty-six, thirty-three, very close passage in the House. So you're gonna have bipartisan opposition to some extent, just to answer that question. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Member Bitzer, and I see Vice Chair Trujillo.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on some of those public meetings and the, the stakeholder engagement that you previously touched on. I'm curious, what was the feedback on that? And what were the, the points of contention? And what were the points of agreement? If you can just kind of briefly summarize for us.
Sure. So a lot of the meetings that the department took were with folks that were, will be regulated parties under this rule, and they were industry folks of all sizes, large, large industry, the smaller industry folks. And the, the ins and outs of this rule and the conversations that were had surrounded, you know, many, many of the topics such as how credits are generated, how deficits are generated, how a regulated party will be able to resolve any deficits that they may generate. Just as a few examples on that. And we do fully anticipate to include in our notice of intent to present technical testimony a very detailed explanation of what those meetings were about and the different considerations that were presented to the department and how the department applied those in developing.
Okay, thank you. It's the only question I have at this time.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo. Any other board members have any other questions that have popped up? Yes, Member Hunker.
Yes, one more question, and that is, we frequently run into issues, at least in the air program, between the state's jurisdiction and the Albuquerque-Burnleyo County jurisdiction. I'm assuming this is a statewide requirement, and no action would need to be taken by the Albuquerque-Burnleyo County Board, but I just wanted to clarify for my, my own clarification there.
Uh, thank you Chair Sweeney and Member Hunker. There is no action that needs to be taken by the Albuquerque-Burnleyo Air Quality Control Board. The authority for the Environmental Improvement Board to adopt this regulation falls under the Environmental Improvement Act. So there will not need to be joint hearings. This is a, this is a statewide rule.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarifying question. I do have one question. As you shared with our board today, there's been stakeholder meetings. Can you just give us a little bit more detail on the stakeholders? I know you mentioned industry. You mentioned, you know, of course, the public. Have there also been other, maybe environmental groups or other local, local community groups?
Yes, of course. Thank you Chair Sweeney for the question. Um, so interested parties included engaging with, as mentioned, at least eight other state agencies that have gone through this process, which the department consulted with to obtain advice. Um, there was verbal and written input accepted. There was email bulletin sent out via the listserv to the public, and a detailed webpage was maintained. As for the specific folks that were included in conversations with the department and outreach, NMED communicated on several occasions with leaders of the tribal, the tribal environmental directors and leaders of all twenty-five nations, pueblos, and tribes in New Mexico. Interested parties also included utilities such as like P and M utilities, the environmental protection groups, environmental justice groups, and just others with relevant experience. We also engaged with different counties within New Mexico and participated in the workforce conference.
Thank you for that additional information. And so I think to one of my fellow board members' questions, has there been a lot of opposition in those meetings? Or what's been the, some of the feedback?
A lot of what the, uh, thank you Chair Sweeney for that question. A lot of the engagement that the department has had regarding this is about the ins and outs and how the rule will work. I don't know if I would classify it necessarily as like opposition. We haven't heard any public comment from folks today opposing that the board take up this petition for hearing. And so I think granting a hearing on this will allow the board that those fourteen days to fully explore what this rule means for New Mexico and how it's going to benefit the reductions of greenhouse gas emissions for our state.
Thank you for that response. Appreciate that. That's all the questions I have. Yes, Member Hunker.
Yeah, one more from me, sorry, but when I saw the timing of your proposed hearing period, the first thing I thought of was balloon fiesta. And for those of us who live in Albuquerque Metro, that is the most disruptive time of the year. There's traffic, there's visitors. I know I've got family coming in for balloon fiesta. It seems like, and I know my attention to the hearing would be somewhat disrupted during part of that period. I would guess that may be the case for some of members of the public and interested parties that want to participate in the process. Have you thought about that? And what, again, back to the timing issue of why have it during that particular period of the year when there seems to be plenty of, of time before the July first legislative deadline?
Uh, thank you Chair Sweeney and Member Hunker for that question. Uh, balloon fiesta is definitely a beloved tradition in New Mexico, and we do recognize that it does fall during this requested time period for a hearing. As a rule that would have statewide applicability, we'd be asking for the hearing to occur in Santa Fe most likely, and we'd avoid the disruptions of traffic and things like that for the Albuquerque balloon fiesta that we now come along with it. Uh, as for scheduling, I, I think that's, you know, there's a lot that goes into the timing of these considerations and availability and things like that. And we just ask the board to consider that the, that the department has looked at these things and feels that this is a timeline that's gonna get us, get us to where we need to go to get this rule in place and allow regulated parties to start working towards compliance earlier rather than the date the legislature mandated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that response. Members of the board, do you have any other questions for our guests this morning? If not, do you have any comments or discussion regarding this? Yes, Member Garcia.
Uh, yes, regarding October timeframe, it's really not, not good at all for me either. I've got a, a trip planned and some other things going on that prevent me from participating in much of October. Is it possible to push it into November if the other board members are amenable to that?
Yes, the department? Do you have a response?
I'm sorry, Chair Sweeney, are you, are you asking, uh, Member Garcia, if the department is okay with a November hearing?
I apologize. I was asking, I was asking you all if there was a possibility to move into November. The hearing.
Uh, with the, the schedule that's being coordinated and checking the availability of the hearing officer and things like that, we would defer to the board on their availability, availability. We would just want to double check with Ms. Orth that she would be available. That does allow us time to still meet the statutorily mandated legislative deadline.
Thank you for the response. Member Garcia, do you have any follow-up questions?
No.
Thank you. Um, members of the board, yes, Vice Chair Trujillo, you have a question?
No, well, a little bit. I was gonna actually ask Pam, Ms. Jones, if she wouldn't mind letting us know what we already have scheduled, because I, I know we have a number of things scheduled for September. I think we have something scheduled at the end of October, and I know we have something going to be scheduled in November. So if we could just kind of get an idea of what the, the calendar is already looking like, maybe that'll help us out a little bit.
There is, there's, um, uh, the, the heat injury rulemaking and they want to hold that in November. And there's the, the permit, the El Rancho Escondido matter, which is, will be on one of our next agendas, and I'm not sure when that'll be set, but I know we have those two.
Thank you for that. And Ms. Jones, on those two matters, can you recall or can you share if there was a one-day or a two-day request on those?
I, I don't, I don't have that on my notes right in front of me, Chair Sweeney. I'm sorry. I can find that out for us if you, if it's necessary. I can go back to the petitions. And I'm not, I'm looking at my calendar, and I'm not sure, but we'll let Felicia speak for herself. I think she's a call-in on this, on this meeting, but I do know that she has some other obligations. I'm looking at my calendar. Uh, early in November. But I would let her communicate that.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
I've just sent her a text.
Okay, is she on the platform this morning?
She was, and I understood that she had switched from computer to phone. And I'm thinking she's calling user five.
Okay.
Madam Hearing Officer, can you hear us? She's a bit, well, I've just got a text back, the week of the third, she is out.
Okay, of November, just to be clear. Okay. Thank you for that. All right.
Chair Sweeney, just so you know,
Yes.
the, for the heat illness, they've requested November third to the seventh. So it's, it's at least implying five days.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the, our legal counsel. But, uh, Ms., uh, Member Garcia, did you have a question? I saw your hand being raised. No, okay. All right, so it looks like the week of November third, if, if the heat illness hearing goes as tentatively in that, in that slot. So I'm trying to look at my calendar here. It gets kind of tight. Let's see, I'm going way far ahead. Okay, then we come into uh, the next week with November ten through right before Thanksgiving. Members of the board, I don't know what your, your thoughts. Oh, I, I see. Legal counsel for NMED, stand up. Reporters.
Thank you Chair Sweeney. I just wanted to highlight one point that might help the board in its consideration for scheduling the hearing. We do believe that if it would help get the hearing started and in moving forward this fall, if it needs to be broken up into two sections, we do think that would be achievable with the way we could organize the presentation of information for the board's consideration.
And maybe some additional question on that. Thank you for, for that, that additional thought. So would you break up, it's a weekend or half of it in October and then half of it in November? Or would it have to be sooner? Can you explain a little bit more what you're thinking on that?
Uh, yes, thank you Chair Sweeney. Uh, our thinking is just to provide some flexibility for the board as they're looking at their calendars. Uh, we don't have a specific proposal or specific recommendation on what those dates would be, but we would, we would just defer to you guys on your availability.
Thank you. Yes. Was that Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, can you quickly remind me how many days were requested?
Uh, thank you Chair Sweeney and Vice Chair Trujillo. We requested fourteen days, which would, fourteen business days, which would be three weeks.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, Member Hunker.
Well, just looking at the calendar, and I know Member Garcia said she had conflicts much, much of October, but one option would be to start on the fourteenth, the day after Indigenous Peoples' Day, and there would be fourteen business days ending the thirty-first of October. I'm available during that period. Well, and I think we have a, we have another issue on the twenty-fourth. But I'm just throwing out ideas here. So I would be available during that timeframe.
Thank you all. Yeah, I'm not available, just, just sorry to, to that October fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth. Um, so might have to be after that, but then I think that's where the department's idea or suggestion or, or thought to break it up might be helpful. Um, so maybe we could get a week in October. I don't know. Uh, Member Garcia, what, what are your constraints for October?
I could, I could make the week starting, well, no, you can't do the week of the fourteenth, though.
I can, yeah.
Okay, um, I could make the week of the twentieth work. I can juggle a couple of things and try to do the lap. I can do the week of the twentieth and then the fir-, and then up to the twenty-ninth.
Okay. Okay, and we do have that, as Member Hunker mentioned, the regional rule deliberation scheduled for the twenty-fourth. Is that correct, Ms. Jones? I think that's what we have on our calendar for October.
That's correct, yes. And I'm, I'm texting with our hearing officer. She's having some difficulty with these dates, so I need to find out if we can get her to speak up on the meeting and perhaps she can she can fill us in. Oh, you know what? Let me, okay. I'm gonna call her on my phone. And I wonder if you guys could be able to hear it.
Okay.
Okay, so if you want to talk, I can put you on the meeting.
Hi, uh, sorry, this is, uh, Felicia Orth. I, the unmute thing wasn't working for me. Um, so I am starting a two-week hearing with the Oil Conservation Commission on October twentieth.
Okay.
And so the, the second half of October is, is out. Uh, then November, the Oil Conservation Commission wanted to leave open the possibility that we would need those first couple days in November as well. So I would hesitate to, you know, agree to that week of November third. The rest of November is open, and then, of course, we run into Thanksgiving. Um, is there any chance we could do a week either the first or second week of October and then then to the second week of November?
Uh, fellow board members, what do you think about that? Yes, uh, Vice Chair Trujillo?
We start in September.
Is that possible, or do we run into some, uh, uh, some milestone challenges with notice? Uh, then that's a question for, um, the counsel for the department. You know?
Uh, thank you, Chair Sweeney. Uh, we, the department did build into the pre-hearing process a little bit extra time uh, beyond the statutorily required, uh, sixty days. And so starting September sec, twenty-second would not impact the, the required notice. It would just constrain a little bit the amount of time for the exchanges of notices and, and to present technical testimony and potential rebuttal testimony. Uh, but the department is able to begin September twenty-second if that's, uh, best for the board.
Thank you. Right. Yes, Chair.
Um, I, I understand the NMED's, um, strategy in trying to implement this rule as early on as they can, and I appreciate that. Um, but I think, uh, looking at our calendar and, and historically speaking, the beginning of the year is a much slower time for the board. Um, come, uh, January, February, March, we tend to slow down on our issues. And that would actually be a better time to hold a hearing, uh, of this length. Um, so if it would possible, but could we move it to the beginning of the year when it would just be a lot easier to accommodate you all?
Chair Sweeney, is that a question you'd like me to answer?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, yes. Uh, so I don't know, um, uh, if you have any comments or feedback from uh, Vice Chair Trujillo's, uh, question.
Yes, thank you. Um, moving this to the beginning of the year is difficult, given the legislative session. Uh, the, the staff for the department, um, would be required to assist there. And so it'd be very difficult to do a hearing during the legislative session for a rule of this complexity. Uh, would it be possible to hold some of the hearing in the month of December?
Yes, members of the board, what do you think, uh, on that? Yes, Member Hunker.
Sorry, I was having trouble getting back to the right screen. Uh, yeah, I was actually gonna throw out the idea, there's, there's three whole weeks in December before Christmas. Which, uh, at least are, are pretty clear for me. Uh, if we started December first, we'd have through the nineteenth. We'd have three full weeks available there, at least on my calendar. So, uh, that, that would be an option for me.
Um, yes, Member Bitzer.
December's, uh, hands-on deck season in my day job, so, uh, my availability will be limited that month.
Thank you for your input, Member Bitzer, and Vice Chair Trujillo.
I, I'm facing a similar situation as the Member Bitzer. It's, um, a busy time both professionally and personally, uh, in December.
Okay. Yes, Member Garcia?
Um, with that, I wonder if we could go back to looking at September twenty, starting September twenty-second. Do, uh, part of it or two weeks of it, and then pick another week for the last bit?
Yes, uh, what do you, member, uh, uh, board members look at that? My, my September twenty-second, I could do, uh, um, uh, Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to, uh, let you know that the hearing officer is available the week of September twenty-second.
Okay.
That works with her calendar.
Thank you. Yes, uh, fellow board members, what, what do your schedules look like for the week of September twenty-second? Good? See some head nods, thumbs up. Member Hunker.
Yeah, I'd be clear for, uh, the week of the twenty se, twenty-second and the week of the twenty-ninth. You know, and, uh, maybe we could, uh, get done what we could, maybe even finish. I mean, we seems to me the ozone precursor hearing lasted ten business days, uh, and that was as controversial as, as things seem, seemed to get.
Thank you for that, uh, Member Hunker and that vote of positivity. Um, um, members of the board, what is, what do those two weeks look like? Member, uh, Member Bitzer, thank you, are about to raise your hand.
I'm trying to get my wife to respond to me. Uh, we're in Africa at some point in September, but I don't know when we leave and when we get back. I think it's sort of mainly the heart of it, but if she'll take my call and or respond to my texts, I'll know better, but she's ignoring me.
Thank you, Member Bitzer. Yes, Vice Chair Trujillo.
While we wait for Member Bitzer to get his response, I have another follow-up question to that. Um, that three weeks, does that include our deliberation time, or do we need to also schedule deliberation time later?
Thank you, um, thank you, um, Member, or Vice Chair Trujillo, eh, and to Legal Counsel for NMED. What, I don't know if that was factored into that, that request. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair Sweeney and Vice Chair Trujillo. When we considered this three-week, uh, fourteen-day timeline for the hearing, it did not include final deliberations of the board. Uh, it considered the board may want to deliberate on some issues afterwards. But likely the, the length and complexity of this rule, you'd be interested in having a hearing officer report and transcripts available for your final deliberations on this. And that's why we've built in that, that extra time following the hearing to ensure, um, you know, you, you would have time for a one-day meeting to, to make those deliberations.
That's, that's, um, thank you for that response, and I think for timing, and I don't know, um, you know, um, without starting this whole process, um, because I think we've deliberated for ten business days or nine business days for the ozone precursor rules as well. So just putting that out there for the board. I don't know if it's as complex as that. Um, but just, um, in terms of timing. So I understand now why there was that extra time built in uh, for, to allow the board to, to do that deliberation. So I appreciate that, um, forethought. Um, all right. Um, so great question, Vice Chair Trujillo, and that provides some enlightenment for me, I think. Um, so, members of the board, um, so we're looking right now, even if we had the September, uh, what do we say, twenty-second timeframe into, um, uh, it's, but that would be October third timeframe. Um, and then hopefully, you know, thinking very positive, we could get everything done in that two weeks, but then, uh, would we at that time and, and maybe, um, looking to our legal counsel or Ms. Jones, need to, at this point, identify a follow-up week for the requested additional four days that is on the request? What, what do you, um, or, or maybe, um, Legal Counsel, do you, are you pretty certain that we'll probably need a good fourteen business days?
Uh, Chair Sweeney, for the benefit of the public with the public notice, I believe it would be beneficial to schedule that third week, uh, so we could include it in the public notice. If the board, uh, does end up being able to hear all evidence, testimony, and public comment in the ten days, then that time could be used for deliberations. Um, but in the interest of our estimation of needing fourteen days, it would be helpful to have that third week scheduled.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for that response, uh, again. Yes, um, Member Bitzer, I think you got a response back.
Yeah, I'm, uh, dodged the bullet on, uh, no, I think we're back on the nineteenth, or we're traveling on the nineteenth, so we should, I should be in for those, those two weeks.
Okay, wonderful. So we're, just for clarity and, um, to bring us back, we're looking at, starting September twenty-second through October third, that two-week chunk. I think, members of the board, yes, uh, Member Garcia?
Uh, just one point. We don't have, uh, Member Ely's input on timing. Uh, I think, uh, you know, if it were a one or two-day hearing, we could figure this out pretty quick, but the, the fact that it's three weeks makes it difficult. Um, and I think we're probably gonna end up with somebody missing, no matter what. So if we can afford to have somebody missing, that's okay, I guess. Um, two people missing might be questionable, but anyway, uh, just, just to remind you that Ely, Member Ely's input is not here.
Excuse me, Chair Sweeney? I, I do know, I, I, I communicated with, uh, Member Ely, and she is out of the country mid-August to mid-September. So.
So conceivably, she should back, be back the same day that, or, or to, to start this on September twenty-second.
Yeah, I don't know what she just said, mid, mid-August to mid-September to me.
Okay. Well, thank you for that input. Wonderful. All right, um, so, um, it looks like, given all our, our, um, array of schedules, that September twenty-second to October third for that first ten days, and then members of the board, and, and just one more time checking, Ms. Jones, that works for Felicia's schedule as well. Is that correct?
Ye, yes, the twenty-second and then the, the week of twenty-nine to the third.
Thank you. And then with that, is there another week where we could do the follow, you know, the follow-up week, uh, four days of that has been requested by the department, um, as a follow-up, uh, to ensure that, again, back to the public notice and what's been put out there, that we make sure that we identify as well? Do you have, uh, members of the board, do you have a proposal or looking at your schedules? Yes, Member Hunker?
Yeah, how about the week of Sept, uh, November seventeenth?
That's.
Chair Sweeney, excuse me, the, the week of November tenth works best for the hearing officer. In communicating with her right now.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. What does that look like for members of the board? Yes, Member Hunker?
Yeah, I will be out, uh, November tenth through twelfth.
Okay.
I will not be available.
What about in December, early December? What, what? Ms. Jones?
Excuse me, there's, I, I in communicate, a recent communication from the hearing officer says eleven seventeen is fine.
Eleven to seventeen is fine? Of November?
November seventeenth, I'm sorry, yeah.
Oh, November seventeenth. Oh, okay. Um, Member Hunker, will that work for your schedule?
Yeah, I'm good. The November seventeenth week's fine for me.
Okay, members of the board, uh, Member Garcia, does that work for yours? Uh, Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, and Member Bitzer, does that work for your schedule? All right.
It does.
Okay, wonderful. Um, I think we finally got some fourteen days on all our schedules worked out. Um, all right, and yes, raise the roof, uh, Member Bitzer on. All right, um, so, members of the board, um, it looks like the scheduling, um, um, rigmarole that we've gone through, we've identified, uh, fourteen days. Um, and it looks like we've been also coordinating with, uh, um, a potential hearing officer, um, Felicia or schedule. Um, is there any other, um, questions, logistics, um, before a motion? Before we hear a motion? I don't hear, I don't see any, but just to double-checking with, um, the board members. If not, um, would like to entertain a motion? Yes, Vice Chair?
I.
Oh. Oh, sorry, I thought, yeah, I thought you, you went off, off speaker or off mute.
I forgot to turn mute back on.
Okay. All right. Yes, Member Garcia?
Uh, I would move that we hold the hearing for EIB twenty-five dash twenty-three, uh, beginning September twenty-second through October third, resuming on November seventeenth, uh, continuing as necessary, uh, with Felicia Orth as our hearing officer.
Well, second that.
Thank you, Member Garcia, for your motion. And Member Bitzer, for your second, is there any further discussion? All right. Um, seeing none, Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote for Member Garcia's motion?
I will. Motion to set the hearing date. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Hunker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you to our, our, um, our guest this morning, uh, Legal Counsel for NMED. And I appreciate you bringing this matter to us, and also with your, appreciate your flexibility in the dates. Um, thank you so much, and with that, um, have a wonderful day, and, um, we'll be seeing you very soon again. Thank you. With that, we will go, you're welcome. With that, we will go on to our next, hmm, our next matter. Uh, agenda item number six, E, EIB twenty-five dash eleven, our proposed new regulation, eleven dot five dot seven, NMAC, heat illness and injury pro, uh, prevention, motion to vacate hearing date and reschedule hearing date. Uh, Mr. Prince, uh, who's the Legal Counsel for NMED, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you. Good morning, uh, I just wanna be sure everyone can hear me. Okay, great. Uh, yes, good morning, Chair Sweeney, members of the board, uh, Michael Prince, uh, Assistant General Counsel with the New Mexico Environment Department. Also with me is, uh, Bob Genaway, Deputy Director of the Compliance and Enforcement Division with the department. Uh, also on the line is Kristy Peck, uh, Acting Director of the OSHA Bureau. Uh, yeah, we're here before you this morning on the motion that we filed. Uh, thank you for getting it, uh, so quickly on the agenda. So, as, as you know, we were here before the board filed our petition for the, uh, heat illness and prevent, uh, heat illness injury prevention rule. And a hearing was set in July, or July sixteenth, to begin July sixteen. Uh, since, since the filing of the petition, we have received a large amount of, of, uh, Uh since since the filing of the petition, we have received a large amount of of uh public comments. And we we felt it was in the best interest of of the public and and all stake involved or interested stakeholders. To continue the public comment period and engaged uh. Just engage in in further. Uh outreach with with industry and labor and all the interested parties. Um and so we did decide to petition the the board to reset the hearing to kind of, you know, vacate the the July date. And reset it uh and we we did request uh November first or that or the first week rather in November. You know, given uh it sounds like that's not maybe. Feasible with uh you know, and and Ms. Orth was appointed the hearing officer in this matter. It sounds like she's quite busy. The months of October or November. Uh. I think I was speaking with Mr. Genaway, I think we. Could. Would be okay with this being set in maybe the month of December. Uh it sounds like also. The week. I initially thought the week of this, you know, November seventeenth, but. That I know you've reset that now, or you've set that for the other the other matter. And of course, the following week is Thanksgiving, the last week of November. So possibly the first week of December. Uh that's December uh the first is Monday. Yeah, and I do I do, uh I mean, I don't know if five days is necessary, but maybe to be safe. If scheduling it for five days. Or uh. Just to make sure all interested parties have their opportunity to to present their technical testimony or. Make their. Have their opinions heard by the board. Uh I don't know if it'll actually take five days, but I need to be safe. That would that's that would be good to set that. I guess that's with that, I I stand for any questions or if any questions from Mr. Genaway.
Thank you so much, Mr. Prince, and I see member Bitzer, um you have uh some questions for our guests.
Question for the department perhaps uh and the board. Uh could we just use a different hearing officer? I know uh Felicia's unavailable, but um I mean. It's not a zero sum game if we had two hearing officers option. Back and forth, so that's just my thought.
Sure, that uh.
Thank you, member Bitzer. Do you have any um comments there, Mr. Prince?
Oh yeah, thank you, Chair Sweeney, and member uh members of the board. Um yeah, I I understand that this or just may not be. May not be available um. And we uh we'd rather have it proceed. Um with a hearing officer. If she is not available. Uh it looks like Ms. Jones has her.
Yes, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Chair Sweeney and and Council Prince. I um I I've been communicating with Felicia and she is available in uh the month of November. Excuse me, the month of December and January. So if you did want to go through the first week of December, she's available.
Thank you. Is that possible? Um uh Mr. Prince?
Yes, yeah, Chair Sweeney, members of the board, thank you. Yes, the the. The first week of December would be uh. Acceptable to the department and seems to perhaps we're hopefully it works for for all uh board members. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Uh members of the board, do you have any um comments or questions? Yes, member Bitzer.
I uh I think I mentioned earlier, and I think the vice chair also starts to get uh crazy both uh. Personally and professionally in December, so it's that's the whole month is slant for me.
Okay.
My availability will be spotty.
Thank you, Mi- member Bitzer, and I apologize, member Hunker, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I uh I like the idea, might give us a little bit of space between uh hearings here, but uh. Deferring to member Bitzer and Vice Chair Trujillo. I'm I'm able looking for another time for.
Thank you, member Hunker. Yes, member Bitzer. Yes, member Bitzer.
Sorry, did I put my hand back up? I uh. No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Vice Chair Trujillo.
Uh is the department amenable to uh early um. January date before the session starts?
Great question, uh Vice Chair Trujillo, you read my mind. Uh Mr. Prince. Do you have a um any um response to that bad um question?
Yes, thank you, Chair uh Sweeney, members of the board. Uh with, you know, if that's if that's the time that works, that seems to work best for everyone. That's, you know, that's fine. Um. Understand that this scheduling of this matter. And all the other matters fitting it in is is you're challenging. So we will work with the with the board. Happy to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Uh members of the board, what does your January look like? Yes, uh member Garcia.
Uh week of January fifth looks fine, and uh I'm hoping with more time for outreach, et cetera. Uh maybe we could do it in three days as they originally suggested.
Yes, um. I will be busy up to January sixth, um but I can do seventh, eighth, and ninth if it's a three day request. Just um sharing that with the board. Uh other board members? Yes, Vice Chair.
Um I can make that week work, but I prefer the next week if it's possible.
Yes, members of the board, what does your schedule look like?
I'm I'm pretty clear in January, loo- looks like the uh legislative session starts on the twentieth, so. I mean. Maybe the week of the twelfth.
Yes. What does it look like for other board members that week? And and also double checking, seeing if it's possible, Ms. Jones, I don't know if you've heard back from Felicia. Would she be um open the week of the twelfth of January?
He had indicated January is open, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm confirming that week, but I would think that 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 would be fine.
Thank you, and um members of the board, please check your schedules. Again, just noting that as um member Garcia said earlier in the meeting, we'll have to um also hopefully it will work for member Ely. On that um that timeframe as well. Does it look good for members of the board, week of, all right, see thumbs up. Thumbs up for member Bits, remember Garcia. How about you, member Hunker? I think you said it was a good week. Yeah. Okay, so.
Week works for the hearing officer, excuse me.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for confirming that with Ms. Orth. Um so, Mr. Prince, it looks like that week of um. January twelfth, twenty twenty-six would work for the board. Um. Are you uh board members? Are we looking at beginning of the week or later in the week? What does your schedule look like that week? That will be best. I'm good beginning of the week if that works for everybody. Yes, uh Vice Chair Trujillo.
I always like the end of the week, but the beginning of the week I can make work too.
Okay, either way.
Beginning of the week sounds good. Let's do that.
Okay, so we're looking at January twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. Is that correct, three days, Mr. Prince? Just confirming with um your request.
Yes, thank you, Chair Sweeney, members of the board. Um. And I do think. It's. Likely to get uh. Uh achieved within three days. So, yeah.
Okay.
It really depends.
Thank you, um uh legal counsel Prince. Uh I think um also if we have it earlier in the week. Um just noting that we have a couple more days, if like you said, I I sense, you know. Of course, we it's like, you know, the the magic eight ball, right? Trying to figure out the future here. Um but yeah, then we will have a couple more days of that week. Uh yes, Vice Chair Trujillo.
Actually, you expressed sentiments I was thinking.
All right. So um the week of uh. Sorry, I'm January twelfth, twenty twenty-six, and still sticking with um Madam Hearing Officer Orth. Uh is there any other discussion? We need? If not, uh members of the board, I love to entertain a motion. Anyone want to uh make a motion regarding this? Yes, Vice Chair Trujillo.
I will give it a go. Uh I make a motion to set a hearing in the matter of. EIB. Um twenty-five eleven. Uh for Septe- I'm sorry, for January. Uh twelfth uh through the fourteenth. That's it, with a hearing officer to be appointed.
I believe we have a hearing officer appointed already, that being Ms. Orth.
Okay, so um.
The just to reschedule from uh to to um January twelfth. I think that's the motion.
To reschedule to January.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Sounds painful, I'm sorry.
No worries, no worries.
Oh, second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Trujillo, and um second from member Hunker. But no further discussion, uh Ms. Jones, please do a roll call vote on Vice Chair Trujillo's motion.
Okay, and the motion to move the hearing, reset the hearing to January twelfth to the fourteenth of twenty twenty-six with Hearing Officer Orth. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, member Garcia.
Yes.
Member Hunker.
Yes.
Chair Sweeney.
Yes.
And Vice Chair Trujillo.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, Mr. Prince and the department. Uh appreciate you coming to our meeting this morning. Have a wonderful day and weekend.
Thank you, you too.
With that, we go on to the next item, uh item number seven, A dash one or note. Uh I just wanna read this note into the record. Pursuant to uh NMSA seven nineteen seventy-eight, sections ten dash fifteen dash one, H three and seven. The commission may enter closed session to discuss the following following pending litigation. And that would be a uh agenda item number A dash one dash C A dash. Forty-one, one ninety-seven in the matter of the petition for hearing on air quality permit number. Ninety-two ninety-five, which is EIB twenty-two dash twenty-one, Roper Construction. And we have our legal counsel, um Mr. Ugarte um to to present on this. Um, thank you, and the floor is yours.
All right, so I I think we the. Does the board prefer to move to closed session?
Yes, um and I believe we need a motion from uh to do so. Yes, member Hunker.
Uh yes, I move we go into closed session to discuss uh litigation issues.
I second that.
Thank you, member Hunker, for your motion, and and Vice Chair Trujillo for your second. Uh Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on member member Hunker's motion to move into. Um closed session.
I will, member Bitzer, your vote?
I vote.
And again, I didn't I. I didn't hear you, Mr. Member Bitzer.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Hunker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and um I don't know logistically what we need to do to enter closed session, or is that in your? In your realms?
He had uh standby for just a moment while we get that handled, okay? I'll be right back.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Chair Sweeney, this is hearing clerk Lopez. How are you?
Yes. Good morning.
I'll I'll move you guys into a breakout session, so this will just take one moment.
Okay. And again, thank you for your support, Mr. Lopez.
Yeah, you bet.
Walking us through this. And let us know if we need to do anything on our end in order to enter.
Okay, yeah, so it'll start. Okay, it should have. You shouldn't be prompted to.
Louise, at the top of our screen, it says choose a session. Do we need to click that?
Oh, I think he went into.
He maybe maybe he's not in the closed session. Would you like me to step out of this meeting? Uh Ugarte, do I need to be in or out?
I I I think it's fine if you're in.
Okay, uh so what are you, where are you?
There you go.
Choose a session.
Okay, so I should do this?
Yeah.
Join this?
Yes.
And is that what they're doing?
Okay. We we have not, has anybody seen a prompt? On your end?
I have not.
I have not either.
I I see something that says breakout sessions have started. The host will assign you a session to join.
Okay. Okay, I think they started the session. Let me, let me. Call Pam, hey, Bill. Hi, Ms. Jones. Okay. I know we we none of us see that option, Ms. Jones. Let me see, okay, yeah. Okay. Okay. We don't see the prompt, Mr. Lopez. Nope. And. And I don't think anybody else sees it. Of course.
Did Mr. Ugarte see it?
No.
No.
I don't see anything. Uh members of the board, do you see anything on your screen saying breakout session? Up at the top right? No, they're all shaking their head, no. He's gonna try it again, members of the board.
I see breakout sessions will close in thirty-two seconds. Do you guys see that?
Yeah, so he's gonna, um, they're gonna come back into our open session and then try it again, back into closed session. So he, uh, Mr. Lopez did share that it takes a minute to do this back and forth, so that's what that timer is.
Okay, I think we're back with you.
Yes, you are.
Okay, I'm gonna hang up the phone and then try this again with you, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Sure.
You're okay.
Okay, let's try this one more time. Okay, so now you guys should see a prompt at the top of the screen that says breakout sessions have started. And you'll see a button that says choose a session. You're, uh, you're muted, Chair Sweeney, sorry.
Mine says, uh, the host will assign you to a session.
That's what mine says.
I'm sorry, could you repeat it?
It says nada.
It says the host will assign you to a session.
Okay. I'm gonna do that, try.
Ah, there we go.
Okay, there we go.
How long is it gonna last? Cause it'll cut us off at two minutes.
Okay, so now they're in.
Can you adjust the time?
Okay, good. So now you need to join the session.
That's worrying. I just want, I don't want the thing to cut off. It, it, it cuts us off after two minutes.
No, that's because I ended it.
Oh, you ended it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Louise, you're great. I wouldn't be able to do this. Okay.
Going of trip so. Are we back in session here?
We are back in session. Luis is sharing his screen. I think you can take that down, Mr. Lopez.
All right. As we come back in, I think, do we have everybody here? It looks like it. Uh, thank you fellow board members. As we come back into open session, uh, may I have a motion from board?
Yes, I will move. We rejoin open session.
A second there. Thank you, Member Honker for your motion and Vice Chair Trujillo for your second. Uh, with that, Ms. Jones, can we have a real call vote on Member Honker's motion to move back into open session?
Yes, Mr. Member Bitzer, your vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you. Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. And now that we are back in open session, I would like to state that um, no, no decisions were made in closed session uh, regarding agenda item number seven, A one that, A dash one dash C A dash forty one or forty one, one, nine, seven, in the matter of petition for hearing on air quality permit number ninety two, ninety five. Um, and um, and nothing else was discussed. Thank you. Uh, for the record, I look to legal counsel O'Gartan. Did I cover what I needed to cover in that statement?
Chair Sweeney, yes, you did. And I, I think you, uh, if, if it's the board's, um, decision to designate a hearing officer in that matter.
Yes, um. Members of the board, um, to legal counsel O'Gartan's, um, comment, do I, uh, do you have a motion to put on the table? So. My bandwidth is kind of low here. Uh, Member Garcia. Oh, you can you put yourself off mute, please? Thank you.
Sorry. Um, I'll take a stab at it. So I would move that we uh, designate a hearing officer to be approved by the chair, uh, because we don't know what Felicia's, um, uh, schedule looks like, uh, but to designate a hearing officer approved by the chair, uh, to set us, uh, scheduling, um, scenario for the Court of Appeals, uh, decision and, and subsequent, uh, briefing by the parties, um, in the matter of, uh, Roper Construction, uh, Court of Appeals, A one, C A four, one, one, nine, seven.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Member Honker, for your second. Uh, with that, if there's no other discussion, I'm looking to our board members. No other discussion, uh, Ms. Jones, would you please do a roll call vote on Member Garcia's motion?
Well, Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, Member Garcia.
Yes.
Remember Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, Member Garcia, for your motion. Um, if there's no other, um, decisions for agenda item number seven, I'll look around and to our our members and our legal counsel, it's like no other discussion, we will go on to agenda item number eight next meeting and upcoming matters. Um, on this agenda, um, Ms. Jones, could you just remind, we've had a lot of discussion about scheduling and what is coming up on our agendas in the near future or far future? Um, can you remind us on the next coming, uh, few, few weeks for us?
Yes, um, we have, um, for the, we have a one, one item on the, uh, agenda for June twenty seventh, which, wait, let me check that date. The last the twenty seventh is our last, uh, i- is our next meeting, and we have the Escondido matter, El Escondido matter. Rancho Escondido.
Yes.
The permit matter.
Okay. Thank you, board members. Please mark your calendars for that, um, upcoming date. And I know, um, one of our members, vice chair, might not be there, but we look forward to that meeting. Is there any other, um, upcoming matters or next meeting? All right. I don't see any. Oh, Member Garcia, sorry.
Uh, yeah, if, if we could, um, go into July and August just to verify, I have, uh, July eighteenth is the the matter that I'm going to be hearing officer with the OSHA hearing, and that's it for July. And then August, did we have something in August? I don't have anything on my calendar.
I don't have anything docketed at this point for August.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That would be Friday, the twenty second, if we have a meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, Member Garcia, for that. Um, that clarity for July and August. All right.
One more comment.
Yes, yes, Member Honker.
If we do have a meeting on August twenty second, I will not be available for that meeting. Yes, FYI.
Thank you, Member Honker. We'll note that on our calendars. Um, appreciate that. That information, uh, Member Bitzer.
Help me out here. I'm not seeing June on my, uh, on my calendar. What's the date again?
June twenty seventh.
Yes, June twenty seventh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, that's all.
That's why this agenda item is so important. Thank you, Member Bitzer. Um, all right, with no other comments, questions, uh, sorry, I'm just checking my platform here. All right, we can go on to our next agenda item, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I will move we adjourn.
Thank you, Member Bitzer. Thank you, Member, I was thinking ahead. Thank you, Member Honker, for your motion and Member Bitzer for your second. Ms. Jones, can you do a roll call vote on Member Honker's motion to adjourn?
Certainly. Member Bitzer, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And Member Garcia?
Yes.
Member Honker?
Yes.
Chair Sweeney?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trujillo?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you to the department and all our guests, uh, this morning, along with our legal counsel and fellow board members. I appreciate you attending our, um, special meeting today, and have a wonderful weekend and safe travels if you're going anyway.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Yeah, see you later in the month.